Okay, this November 4th, 2015 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. Just a couple of things before we get started. First, a mea culpa on my part. Actually, I felt like Roseanne, Roseanne Adana, you remember her? You know how she'd give a big speech and then somebody would give her a piece of information and make the whole speech kind of irrelevant? Well, I made this big speech about how we should have this policy to approve progress reports. And afterwards, Todd Allen came up to me, played the Jane Curtin role, and reminded me that we do have a policy which we had approved six months previously, which I put in your folder. And the key line is that the grading system will be approved by the board and published in the parent-student handbook. So we are partners in this. We need to be involved in this. It's very important as the school district goes forward to look at progress reports. The other thing is that we would like, I'd like to just propose a change in the order since we're going, one of the actions we need to take is the approval of a collective bargaining agreement to meet, to do the non-public sessions, to do both the non-public session and the non-meeting session after public comment, then come back and do the rest of the business. That seems to be a more natural order if that's agreeable to people. So, public comment.
Hey, I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. That's the public as usual. Hey, I was at the eighth grade guitar concert last night, and it was really great. What happens is the, they spend two months teaching these eighth graders to play guitar. I imagine most of them have never touched a guitar before. And then they have a concert, and it was just so good, and the kids were so great. So, thanks, Mr. Irvin and everybody else who participated. The other thing somebody asked me to mention is, well, to me, it's a rumor that somebody, I guess the superintendent at the Lee Selectman meeting, mentioned renovating the middle school or building a new one. And I was hoping we could hear about that here. All right, that's all I got.
Thanks. Other public comment? Okay. Could I have a motion then to go into non-public session? Kenny?
I move that we go into non-public session based on RSA 91-832, subscript 3, and I believe it's C, matters which discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body itself.
Okay. Moved by Kenny. Seconded, seconded by Denise. So we need a roll call vote on this, so, Dan?
Dan Klein, yes.
Sir Farwell, yes.
Kenny Rotner, yes.
Al Holland, aye.
Tom Newkirk, aye.
Denise Day, aye.
Maria Barth, yes.
Okay, so we're going to the non-public, so we go to the conference room?
Yes. The public turns across the hall and just down a little.
Okay, and so after, just so the people know, after the non-public, we're going to go into, we're going to adjourn to go into non-meeting. Okay?
Right. What we'll do is we'll make a, we'll close the non-public on the personnel agenda item. We'll open the door to the hallway. The board will make a motion to go into non-public again on a student matter. We'll address that issue. We'll complete that. The board will then make a motion to go to non-meeting on contractual issues in public. Then we'll close the door again. We'll get these three things done. Rather than walking back and forth, we open the door, and the public has the right to hear us making the motion, then we're good.
Just, I, and just to reiterate that, so there's really two separate non-publics, and they'll be handled as two separate non-publics. One is a personnel matter. That will end. Second non-public will begin after we go out of the first. That's a student matter. And after that, when there's the non-meeting, which is the contractual. So, just, can't say that stuff.
Okay, the meeting will come to order. Could I have a motion to approve the October 21st, 2015 regular meeting minutes? Kenny?
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from our October 21st meeting.
Okay. Moved by Kenny. Is there a second? Seconded by Denise. Are there any corrections? Kenny?
I had two. I think the first one would be, I'm trying to get the page there. It's under Board Comments. So I think that's page, page two. I had mentioned that both the town of Lee and the town of Durham had approved the solar array project, and that 10% of that project's energy generation was going to be made available to mass waste school to purchase. So I would want to add that.
So do you have wording for that?
Yeah, Kenny, if I could, it's 10 to 20%, and it's the Moheramit School.
Okay.
Not that one.
Oh, I'm sorry, right, Moheramit.
Okay.
10 to 20% of what?
Of the energy produced by the town of Durham's solar array project. And that's recently been approved both by the town of Lee and the town of Durham. So construction will proceed. And I can give, I'll write something down.
Thank you.
I can do that. The second thing, and maybe this was just me, but when we discussed the full-day kindergarten, I was under the impression that we kind of liked the language more that rather than having a half-day option, we were going to have an opt-out for parents.
Yeah.
So I think, I think the wording in there.
Okay, could you just point to, is there a spot?
Sure. Let's see. So the second paragraph, that first sentence, that we'll be giving parents a half-day option, and instead, there's the understanding that parents can opt-out of the full-day kindergarten and send their children for a half-day.
Okay. That, do you have that look, Laura?
That's the two things I have.
Okay. Did you get that one? Other corrections, changes? Hearing none. With those two changes, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor, the minutes are approved. Announcements and commendations from the district?
I'm just going to focus on sports tonight. Earlier this evening, the boys' soccer team won 2-1 against Lebanon.
Okay, great.
They're playing in the state championship on Saturday afternoon at 4:00. Southern New Hampshire University, second year in a row, so congratulations to Charlie Crowell and the boys' team. Tomorrow night at 6:00 at Bill Ball Stadium in Exeter, our girls' team is playing in the semifinals, and if they win, they would play in the state championship on Sunday at Bill Ball Stadium. So that's two possibilities. And just a quick plug for the great running that's done in this community. For the first time in Oyster River history, we have the individual male and female state champion in Division II. So it's pretty exciting. We had Patrick O'Brien won the boys' side, Megan Duty won on the girls' side, and both our boys' and girls' teams advanced to the meet of champions on Saturday. So if you're really interested in a lot of sporting events over the weekend, Nashua, Nashua South High School, Saturday afternoon, 2:30. Leave there, go to Manchester, watch the boys play in the state championship at Snuw, and then Sunday, zip over to Exeter, hopefully, and see the girls play in the state championship.
Don't we have to go to the game Friday night as well?
Yeah, well, you have to go to the game Thursday night first to make sure the girls get there. But I have tremendous faith in our girls. They're going to get there.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank God I don't have his job. I think I'd be hoping that some of the teams would lose. I want to just take a minute to recognize my staff last week for the presentation they made about the math program. Twenty-one staff members showed up. That's the good news. This isn't bad news, but it's puzzling news, and we've got to find a better way to get at the communication. Because while it is honorable and great that the staff did such a great presentation, there are 18 parents there. So we communicated to 18 parents. We've got to find more creative ways, and I'm not, I'm not complaining about parents. I'm complaining about my or our inability to figure out ways to get the message out appropriately. The presentation itself was interactive. Parents asked good questions, and I'm sure there'll be a trickle-down effect, but it's sort of like trickle-down economics. It doesn't get far enough down to the whole population. So it's sort of recognizing my staff, but also questioning the way we're doing things.
Thank you. No, no. Do we have to?
It's just going to, no.
Well, you'll have your time later, okay? Is there other?
Good evening. Carrie Vash from Mastway. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the parents who assisted and put in tons of time into our Halloween event at Mastway. We actually had it on a Saturday this year. What I learned was that there are a lot of Halloween events that happen throughout our community. Some kids went trick-or-treating at UNH in some of the dorms on Thursday night. They went trick-or-treating on Friday night, and then they came back to our school on Saturday night. But we really had an amazing turnout. It was very well organized. Casey Dillon does a phenomenal, phenomenal, excuse me, job with the haunted courtyard. If you've never experienced it, please come next year. It's great. And they all had a great time. So we even had Abe Lincoln in the house, which was quite impressive, I have to say. A lot of parents in costume, too. It was great. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Board? Kenny? Sorry, you ready?
Oh, okay. Well, it's a couple of things. John Carroll has approached me, and he's on our Sustainability Committee, about putting forward a winter farmers' market at our middle school. And we've talked with Jay Richard, and he's really on board, and it's not something that would happen this winter, as farmers are going to have to get set for that. But I didn't know how to proceed if we want to have approval at the board level for that. But we're in the process of talking with farmers who have shown a great interest in that. We're hoping that that will become kind of a school kind of project, which leads, you know, to further into that sustainability of eating locally and making that a real community project. So I just wanted to know that.
Sure. Is that something, if John would like us to, could he write us a letter asking us to approve?
So, John and I can do that.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
Okay.
I would use the word endorse as opposed to approve, because it's not a policy issue. You're looking for support of the board on an endeavor. It's coming through sustainability, so it would work better as an endorsement of the activity rather than approval.
Okay.
Just what I was going to say to Mr. Harrington. I think we really live in the age where parents aren't going out so much to meetings at night. And Alexander won't really like this, but I think it really behooves us, when there are important things like that, that we get them on videotape and that that goes online so people can watch them at those spare moments. Certainly, everything doesn't have to, but things that are really informative like that, I think that's a critical thing. We should somehow make sure that we capture that, and so the publicity is, go watch it online.
And we actually investigated that, Kenny, but Alex was already working that night in another event. So what we have is a one-man person and a person that we're keeping out late, late at night in an evening like tonight, but other events he tapes as well. So it's, that issue came up, and he had the conflict, so we couldn't do it.
Right. Okay.
Sarah?
I just want to also thank the Moheramit staff for the math presentation I did here through the community grapevine. Some very positive feedback about it, and that it was really, people appreciated the hands-on, and they really felt it was going to help them support their children. And I think that is the, what you want from an evening like that. So I do thank them. And I think as far as getting the word out, I totally agree with you and have had events like that as well, that you want to be so informative and people do feel are so important, but at the same rate are so overbooked. So I really am hoping that the district continues to work on those nights that parents do come to religiously, like open houses at the beginning of the year, to really take advantage of really plugging our curriculum during those nights so that parents know what their children are doing. And it really is great PR for teachers as well, because they, parents really, really see what professionals they are and how phenomenal they are.
Yeah.
So I'd just like to echo what everyone has said so far about the math presentation. I was there, and the staff did a fantastic job of not only sort of presenting the curriculum. It wasn't a presentation, it was more of an experiential learning, that parents were able to sort of sit in the shoes of their own children so that we had a better understanding of what our kids were experiencing in the classroom, so that we could then transition our own thinking to help them at home. And that's one of the big gaps with this, this new type of curriculum, is that the way we learned it as kids is so different from what they're experiencing now. I think it's so much better, what they're experiencing now, but I think what they really focused on was giving us the tools to understand how to support them at home and what they were experiencing in the class. So I really think they were spot-on with that. And then I would agree with the points that Sarah and Kenny made as well, you know, sort of getting that asymmetric experience when we can to sort of videotape or capture things that people can then look at later. And then obviously, piggybacking on other events that people are more likely to go to. But anyway, I do think it was a success, and anyone who asks, you know, I'll tell them they should be there next time.
Okay. I'd just like to mention that the National Assessment of Educational Progress scores came out, and New Hampshire scored in the top, one of the top three states for both fourth grade math and reading, and eighth grade math and reading. And I think in eighth grade reading, they were tied for the top, the top state in the country. And so sometimes, I think when we look at the results of our own district, and we're near the top in New Hampshire, we're near the top of one of the top states in the country, and just to kind of recognize that. So I just want to share that. Other board? Denise?
I just remembered, I'll do another plug for a community dinner coming up. I believe it's Tuesday night, November 10th. So, and they'll school the next day, right? Am I right about that, right? So a good opportunity for families to come out. Enjoy a great meal.
Thank you. Brea?
I've said it before, this agenda doesn't give us a place to raise issues, what have you. But, so I will piggyback on what Kenny brought up two weeks ago about the heroin epidemic. And I would ask that we have a presentation on our substance abuse prevention program. I could make a motion that we have that soon.
I think, I don't need a motion. I can make sure that happens.
We'll put it on. Other? Okay. I assume there's no Assistant Superintendent's report? Superintendent's report?
Thank you. Just want to fill the board in on where we are in the Assistant Superintendent search. We are in a great place. We had a screening committee of five go through over two dozen applications yesterday and today. So I thought we'd end up around 20 of the two dozen applications. We eliminated three as incomplete, and then we went through all of the applications. And I would thank Carrie and Misty and Jay, and a missing one, Carrie, oh, Sue, who, we went through all of them, and we ranked ordered the candidates, and we came up with six candidates to interview. That interview process will be a week from Monday, and we'll spend from noon until 8:00 doing those interviews, and hopefully, by the end of the evening, have a candidate that we're all gung-ho for and be ready to present to the board. I originally thought that I would present the candidate in the second meeting of this month, but given the fact that we're not doing the actual interviews until a week from Monday, I'm going to ask the board's grace and delay a nomination until the first meeting in December, which would allow a more in-depth checking, checking of references and so forth. So we're almost on target. I was very impressed. I think the screening committee was very impressed with the applications we had, so we're in a good place there. Then, trying to read my own writing, Smarter Balance, Tom talked about how well we were doing as a state and how well Oyster River does in the state. One of the assessments the state is using is Smarter Balance. Our children went through that last spring. Long delay in this first release of the data due to the state's trying to compile some handwritten test in relation to the state. We probably had six districts that did their whole thing by hand, which really threw off the state's ability to collect and disseminate the data. The commissioner said that in this next iteration of Smarter Balance, she hopes to have it out within the school year we're in. But this particular Smarter Balance result will be released by the state of New Hampshire on November 12th. Josh Olstead, our IT director, has been working for a month trying to figure out how he could release the results to parents electronically. Our backup position is we'll release them the old-fashioned way. The elementary principals would release them through the mail. Our middle school and high school principals will release them in a sealed envelope to the students if we cannot find the electronic solution. So we're trying to figure out a way to match the state's data to our mechanisms for distributing data. But failing that, we'll just do it the old-fashioned way. And if parents haven't, high school in particular, haven't received that data, then we will make sure we mail it to them, because high school parents, students are notorious for not getting things home. They get in the bottom of backpacks or in lockers, and they don't tend to, or they get crumpled up in their pockets and go through the wash, or, I mean, those are the things that happen with teenagers. So, but Todd and Jay are on top of that. So that's going to happen. And the other thing I would say about the Smarter Balance results to parents is, this is the first time the state has done it. So this, this set of data is really baseline data. It's, when we say it's baseline data, it means you can't compare it to any other data that you've received in any other assessment, because it's brand-new. So if parents have questions about the results, I would make an appointment with the guidance staff at the high school or the elementary principals, and they would go over that with parents. But it's a pretty straightforward format. It's actually very nice-looking in terms of a format, and the results are really just the results. As a district, we did better than the state, just like we do in SATs and PSATs and the national assessments. But parents may have questions related to the results related to their child. So we want to make sure that parents have that opportunity to talk to their principals. Kenny, as usual, stole my thunder on the solar array, but I will just say that I do have a copy of the contract with the town of Durham, and I will be signing that tomorrow. And essentially, it commits us to this relationship with the town of Durham for 20 years. It costs us nothing, other than to be a partner. We put no nickel forward, no dollar, nothing. They needed an outlet for their excess energy production. We can use that energy, so it's really just a, a great relationship between the school district and the town of Durham that resulted in us being a partner in their efforts. So I'm excited by that. I think it fits our sustainability policy, and it's great work by the town of Durham and the town administrator, Todd Selig, to generate this kind of grant and to, it is wonderful that he thought of us in terms of asking us if we wanted to partner with them. So, that's my report.
Okay. Business administrator? No?
Just a reminder that we're doing a budget.
What?
Tomorrow morning's budget.
Oh, okay. Good reminder. So we'll be together in less than 12 hours. And I don't know, might you say something? Because you mentioned to me that, I think to some others, that there will be no LGC money coming into us for the next budget year. That's correct? Okay.
What? What?
Why don't you?
That was the news that we just received, in addition to the 16.8% increase in health insurance.
We're not getting that $400,000?
This year we will, but next year we won't.
Oh.
So there will be no premium holiday next year.
Denise?
Is there a reason?
Yeah, there's a little paragraph in the report that says that the reserves were under what they expected. So based on that, they were advised by their actuary not to be awarding a premium holiday next year.
Okay.
I know. Unfortunately.
So Sue's been the bearer of good news.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay. Student senate report?
Can I ask a quick question about tomorrow's meeting? When is it starting and when is it predicted to end?
8:00, 8:30 is coffee and breakfast. Doris will take care of that.
Okay.
And it's, we should be over by noon. We are providing lunch, so you can, if you're in a rush, you can grab something and go.
Okay. Carolyn?
Last meeting, I mentioned that the sophomore and freshman were having a fundraiser, which is scheduled for tomorrow, but unfortunately, that has been postponed to a later date. And also, the physical education department asked me to mention on Sunday, November 14th, at 7:00 AM until noon, the PE department is holding a recyclable metal collection to fund their programs, with their first focus being a new climbing wall. The fundraiser is entitled Metal for Muscle, and it's an ongoing partnership with Schnitz, Schneit, I don't know how to say them, a Madbury recycling company. And you can drop off recyclable metals there or at the fundraiser on the 14th. I have papers that they gave me to give to all of you. It's a great event for them, and they're really excited about it.
Okay, moving to the discussion items. We have the ARESPA negotiated agreement, which I believe has been approved by the ARESPA union. Is that correct?
Yes.
Membership?
Hundred percent approval by the unit.
Okay. Could you maybe just run over some of the highlights?
Yep. We entered into a three-year agreement with our ARESPA unit, which includes our custodians and secretaries. So this contract begins in 2016-17 and ends in the 2018-19 year. This was the last unit that had a percentage basis on the health insurance buyout, so we were able to put a dollar fixed amount ceiling, like we have with the teachers and other units. We increased the amount paid at retirement for unused sick days from $20 to $50. As a comparison, our teachers get $70. We revised our sick bank language. The language we had was really confusing, and we put very clear language in and what it's for and so forth, and how to use it. We actually created a sick bank governance committee made up of administration and ARESPA members. We've had a floating holiday forever in the contract. Everybody was using Columbus Day, so we just changed it from floating holiday to Columbus Day. We deleted a bunch of language in the contract that wasn't relevant any longer. We added a tax sheltered annuity, a match of $300 in the first year, so we put in $300 as a district. If a staff member puts in $300, they get the whole $300. Again, as a comparison, our teachers are at $500. We increased longevity pay for those custodians and secretaries who have been here through the end of the step system that's in the contract. And we negotiated a salary agreement of 1.5% in the first year, 2.25% in the second year, and 2.5% in the third year.
Good. So each year, Sue, correct me if I'm wrong, each year comes into, comes in less than 3%, which was our goal. So that was, that was one of the goals that we set as a board. So could I have a motion to approve this negotiated agreement with ARESPA? Kenny?
I move that we approve the agreement with the Oyster River Educational Support Personnel Association as enumerated.
Okay. Moved by Kenny, seconded by Denise. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing done. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. This agreement is... This agreement is approved and we'll go on the-
If I may, Tom, I just want to commend the ARESPA representatives during negotiations. It was a non-traditional approach to negotiations and more conversation around what the priorities were for the members of ARESPA, but also the priorities of the district. And the process went extremely smoothly.
Great. Thank you. And thanks to those people who served on the negotiating team. The policy requires that we begin the superintendent evaluation at this point. And what we thought would happen would be that we, the first step would be to ask Dr. Morris to do a self-evaluation and to have that be done by December 2nd, so two meetings from now. At that point, we would have a non-public meeting and we would talk, you know, I think we can, we haven't planned it, but I think we'd have Dr. Morris share the self-evaluation and then we would take, figure out what steps we want to move to complete the evaluation process. So if that's agreeable, the next step would be for us to meet to discuss his self-evaluation two meetings from now, which I think is December 2nd. Sarah?
I remember last year when we were doing the evaluation and feeling like some of the questions that, or the things that we were being asked to evaluate him on were things that I didn't necessarily have privy to see. So for example, you know, his interaction with staff, et cetera. And I guess we talked about last year, maybe we would come up with some kind of survey or means to glean that information other than just asking random staff members and make it more of a, a more holistic thing. So I don't know when it's appropriate to sort of discuss that, but I'd love-
I think we could discuss that on December 2nd.
Okay. Great.
And decide what, if we wanted additional information, how, and how would we get it?
Thank you.
We have a draft charge for the communications committee. And I wondered, Al or somebody from the communications committee, want to say something about that?
So we met, I think it was a week ago Monday, and there had been interest in us communicating the full-day kindergarten proposal going forward. So we sat down to try to come up with a charge that was tight and I think would hopefully alleviate concerns people had. And when we looked at the charge, there were three things that we really wanted to include. The first, that it defined what action the communication committee was going to take. The second, that it clearly defined the topic that we were going to work on. And the third was that we ensured that the information that the communication committee was conveying out to the public was all things that the board had already seen. It's like had been presentations that the board had been privy to so that we weren't synthesizing any new information. We were just reporting the information that had been presented. And so we started, if you look at the draft, the first one is specifically towards the full-day kindergarten. And it says, "The school board authorizes the communication committee to work with the superintendent in order to develop communications pertaining to full-day kindergarten. Information that is used in these communications will be derived directly from the work of the full-day kindergarten committee." And so we would need the board to approve that to allow the communications committee to go forward. The plan is hopefully at the beginning of December to have public forums that we'd start out. And I sympathize with you, Dennis, it is difficult to get people to come. And we still need to get, Dr. Morris is going to have a meeting with the kindergarten teachers because those questions that we asked still need to be answered and the answers need to come back to the boards. The boards seen them before we could then go forward and generate that in the forums. And then if you look down at the second one, that provides the template, we think, going forward for the communications committee. And there, again, the action is still to work to develop communications, but what we left, the blank thing is the topic has to be approved by the board. And then the second blank thing is that the information that we're using to do that topic, we have to fill that in because it could be whatever presentation or committee that the board has seen. So the action that we really need is an approval of the first full-day kindergarten charge.
So would you like to make that as a motion?
So I'd like to make a motion that the, that we approve the charge that the school board authorizes the communication committee to work with the superintendent in order to develop communications pertaining to full-day kindergarten. Information that is used in these communications will derive directly from the work of the full-day kindergarten committee.
Moved by Al, seconded by Kenny. Is there a discussion on this? Denise?
Yeah, my only comment is in terms of, I think I'd like to see something about when the report would be made back to the board, maybe, like-
The time of the whole process?
Yeah, there's a sort of a timeline and I'm not exactly sure, but I mean, I guess we always have committee updates as part of our regular meetings anyway. So I mean, as long as, you know, we are updated in terms of this is going to go out and this is happening, this forum is happening, those kinds of things, you know? I know I would want to see that.
I would think that that could be part of either the superintendent's report or the committee report.
Right.
So, but I think that's a good point.
Would you want that, let's say even as an amendment, to add like another line is that the committee will inform the board either before a presentation is to take place or if the timing is such, will inform the board after there's been a presentation.
So may I speak to that, Tom?
Sure.
I think that what the communications committee's put forward allows the boards to know that the resource being used is information you've already received. If we start putting timeline restrictions on, you know, how things are done, then we're going to end up right back into that circumstance where everything's getting approved at this level as opposed to allowing this communications committee to do the job that you're asking the do here. I mean, I could think of, you know, if we have timelines and restrictions, if a letter's going into the Democrat, if we're going to have, you know, a forum, if we're going to write a letter to Friday Update, if we're going to do something in Lehigh, Cryer. I mean, there's all kinds of vehicles. I think that you want the committee to be true to the charge, but you want the committee also to be able to get the work done. And if you're going back and forth between the committee on work that you've already approved, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Yes. I would just say that I think we have a mechanism for committees to report what's going on. We don't need something new for that. We just need to follow through with that.
And I was agreeing with you. That's why I said, you know, if it's possible before and if not after. But I'm fine with just reporting back. I was trying to satisfy Denise's-
And I was just going to say, to add one thing with that, because if we, you know, the forums, of course, we would tell people, since we want them to show up long in advance. So like at a committee or at, when the committee updates occurred, we'd say, we want to have a forum, say December, whatever. And the other thing we discussed is like, you know, there was concern that somehow the board wouldn't be informed if we sent out some letter. Well, if we've generated a letter, of course, we would include it in email to the rest of the board. You'd have, you'd see with communications, it wouldn't be some surprise. So, and of course, then we'd say when we had an update, we've sent the letter that you've, we've shown you out to whatever fosters of that. So there's clearly an avenue to provide, to keep the board apprised of whatever we're doing.
Yeah. And if I could just, again, step in, Al, if you don't mind. We wouldn't use email. We'd use the board's official communication channels so that you're all getting information in your packets, that kind of thing. And I wouldn't use an informal process for communicating with the board as a body.
Further questions? Okay, ready to vote on this? All those in favor of this charge, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. We have a charge. We need a motion to approve a particular student for attending at the Oyster River High School. And, yeah?
So I move that we allow a student to attend the Oyster River Community School District High School as presented to us in the second of our non-public meetings this evening.
Can you move that? Sorry.
I move that we allow a student to attend the Oyster River Community School District High School as presented to us in the second of our non-public meetings this evening.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Dan. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Seven in favor. Motion passes. We need a motion to approve, there's one policy and I believe it's for second read. Is that correct? Change of school assignment, policy JCA. Could I have a motion to approve that on second read for approval? Maria?
So moved.
Moved by Maria, seconded by Denise. Okay, is there discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. This policy is approved on second read and becomes policy. Okay. School committee, I think I have everything that's right. Say anything? School committee, school board committee updates? Denise?
Long-range planning committee met and finalized the projections and the PowerPoint to be shown to the board, which I believe is going to be at our next regular meeting on the 18th.
Okay. Can I ask Denise a question just in terms, I went through those yesterday and I'll get hold of Lisa if you don't know the answer to this, but in her high school projections, she's indicating that she would expect that we would have 200 Barrington students as tuition in, you know, in the fifth year and beyond. Do you know where she derived that number from?
I know it basically came from looking at the contract in terms of the actual, the max number. Let me find that one. But I, she can definitely explain it better when she does the presentation. But I know that for the high school projections, basically, you know, the committee took the in-district number of students. And then in terms of the Barrington students, looked at the maximum as written in the contract and just projected that out, that at some, at some point, I think it was, I think it was 50 per grade is the way she figured that eventually it would sort of level out to be about 50 per grade. And that may not be right, but I think that's-
The reason I'm asking the question is the contract establishes 125 as a ceiling unless both, both school systems agree to go beyond that number. So I'll give her a call tomorrow and see why she's using 200.
200 as opposed to 125.
Yeah.
I think it was a 20%. There was something about, there was ability to go like 20, there was something about a 20%. And I think that that's where she got that.
Okay. Yeah, all right.
Todd, do you have, do you have a sense of that? The growth of the Barrington population?
I mean, in terms of whether the number-
Whether, whether it's realistic to expect it to be 250 or the contract or whether-
Well, I think the way the contract is structured, as Dr. Morris pointed out, when you reach the 125 level, it requires mutually agreed-upon level beyond that between the two districts. So it's really hard to create a projection around that because it really is a negotiation at that. Certainly, one of the variables we would look at is our resident population and what's our capacity to, what can we sustain without, you know, increasing staff. So I think it is, it is a challenge to project and I completely sympathize with the difficulty of trying to pin down, how do you project something that is not necessarily a mathematical pattern? So.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Other committee? Other committee, Maria?
I wanted to talk a little about the 68 Hours of Hunger. That it's been a little difficult relationship in the fact that we don't have a policy that actually fits the situation. And the feeling of the group is that we would like to ask you to disband it as a school committee, committee, just because the way it works. At this point, we have never mixed our funds with the school system. We have it all through the 503C group that is spread over the seacoast area in as far as, I think there's a chapter in California, some other state. And all the money goes through them. We just pay bills to cover expenses. As I said last time, our involvement or families involved in this program has grown since last year. I went to a regional meeting Monday. Rochester has over 100 children, Kittery has 90 kids. So we're a small, so far, program. But it's quite impressive to see the hundreds of volunteers that are committed to keeping this going. And the committee wants to keep going. The bylaw says everybody has to be a volunteer. Nobody can do it on paid time, so to speak. And we obviously need staff members to volunteer and help with this because of the confidentiality. We don't want to know who the kids are. We don't want to identify the kids. That's done through nurses and guidance counselors. And we have wonderful staff that have stepped up and said they want to volunteer. I would like to stay as kind of a, I don't know what.
Liaison. Liaison.
Yes, but it wouldn't be, you know, appointed one since it's not a scope for, but I would because I think it's important enough. And that's where we are. So I'm asking the chair for the next meeting to have it on the agenda, to disband it, which our policy says we can do anytime. But I assure you, the group will keep working.
And I think it may be even easier for them to work without the restrictions of being a board committee, so.
I think so too.
So, so we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting and certainly thank you for all the work you did to get that thing rolling and your commitment to that. I think it's-
I love to take praise, but there are wonderful people that have actually done much more than that.
Yeah. But thank you.
Up till now, so the taxpayer ID you're using is the organizations as opposed to the schools for where you house the money? Is that correct?
I can't quite hear you.
I'm sorry.
I think you might all need to talk into the microphone, so.
The question was that the money that you have so wonderfully raised, that's being housed in the taxpayer ID of the 68 Hours organization?
Yes, and it always has been.
Not in the school?
There are two credit cards. One Doris, the Morse, has, as one of the volunteers for this. And then one other person whose name I can't remember. And they pay the bills. And we had a wonderful presentation at this regional meeting about nutrition, on how to get the necessary nutrition into a bag that a little kid can carry home for 68 hours. And the volunteers around this, this was a professional nutritionist that has volunteered his time to take apart the bags and look at every single solitary item that you can buy and send home and still get the vitamins and the stuff, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay.
Is there a way, because I seem to remember when you talked about 68 Hours Hunger, it could only be, the money you raised could only be used for food. And we had talked about, our concern was really like, what if like you needed heating oil assistance or something else? So is there a way that, you know, I know that having the 68 Hours of Hunger gives you a much bigger fundraising platform and all that, but is there a mechanism for you guys, if you're, you know, to have something, an off-brand or that, where you can take some of the fundraised money to gain a little bit more flexibility in some of your needs?
We're hoping that there are organizations that address heating oil and obviously the fire departments are taking on the codes and stuff, but yes. But yes, we cannot just raise money and use it the way we want to. But we can, and we have talked about it, and start calling it 68 Hours of Hunger and more. And I can send you a letter and say, we have heard that deodorants or toothbrushes or whatever is a big issue. And would you give money to that? And you would then have a mini little account, or we would have a mini account for toothbrushes, even though I've been told that we should ask our dentists, and they are more than happy to give us toothbrushes. But that's as an example.
Yeah.
Okay.
So 68 Hours and 68 Hours of Hunger and more.
Other committee updates? The wellness committee met. Catherine Moore is the chair of that now. One of the big initiatives, they're going to create a subcommittee to look at mental health. So that's one of the big pushes they're going to make, is a subcommittee that's being formed. And I've asked her to come to the meeting just briefly to talk about what the goals, you know, similar to what we do with sustainability, what the goals are. So you hear from her and not from me. So that's going to be coming up. Other committee? Hearing done? Public comments?
Yeah, I'm Dean. I wasn't going to make a public comment, but I'm looking at the tuition agreement, and I don't really see anything that says that we have to agree if Barrington wants to send more than 125 students.
Correct.
They can just, I thought you said they had to, but no, they can just keep, you know, it's up to them.
No, it's up to us.
I don't see that here, but, okay.
Other public comment? None? Okay, closing actions. We will all reassemble tomorrow morning, okay? So eight, eight-thirty for breakfast. Meeting will start at eight-thirty. Then we'll have a budget workshop at the 12th, and then a next regular meeting on the 18th of November. Okay? So that concludes our business for today, I think. And so could I have a motion to adjourn? Maria? Moved by Maria, seconded by somebody. Dan, all those in favor, raise your hands. We adjourned.